Little Gizmo spinning. There we go. Awesome, thank you guys for being here. Appreciate it. We do have a quorum, so we're ready to get started. Like to ask us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Weeks, how are you, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, very much. Don't get too comfortable.
Yeah.
At this time, I would ask for a motion to move into executive session under Idaho Code 74-2061B. Also, motion. Motion by Mr. Kimball.
Aye, second.
Seconded by Ms. Harris. We'll call vote. Mr. Kimball?
Aye.
Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Griner?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll run next door, be right back.
Just walk.
I'm a walker, I don't run.
Alright, just not run.
There's someone running off that, so. Police will see the board. Hopefully, they can hear us. Probably not. Oops, my anyway.
No.
How's it going, Terry?
Another day in paradise.
There you go. Why not?
We had to move out of Chittle. We built a whole retirement fund, financial. My dad had a friend that was in the military in Florida. He said, wherever you want to work from, I used to live, give me a call. So dad called him. They came up here and then, you know. The rest is history.
Ah, interesting.
He had a friend that had some acres that wanted to get rid of and latched on to it. I know my dad went on and I stopped at the top of the hill there and we sat there and looked down over the valley. In five minutes, I made up the mind, this is where I want to spend the rest of my life. What a decision.
There you go. There you go.
Probably been one of the nicest adventures I've ever had living in this valley.
Now, when did you, when did you get here?
1980.
1980. Then you got to see a lot of this change.
When we got here, we had the borrowed money at 21 and a half percent interest.
True, wait.
That was tough. When the recession came along, the MBEs and that was a great time. We were able to walk our way out of that hole.
Yeah. I forgot about that. I wasn't, I was still 1980, I was in eighth grade. Yep. Oh. She wasn't even a thought, right?
It was more in 92, Steve.
I think way to hear one or two years older than me, right?
1980? I was starting my sophomore year in school.
We have a fantastic community, a lot of good people in this community.
I was, uh, neat that graduation drive by. Did you see that?
Oh. I've seen a couple of them on the news. Other, other colleges have done that. I'd call you better high school.
Hundreds, like.
Oh, absolutely.
Hundreds of cars. Just driving by. Yeah, that's pretty neat.
Easy.
Yeah, well, get back to normal. No, the way the news is, you think that the virus is getting gone. All I hear about is riots.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's oof, oof, oof. Yeah, it's terrible. A lot of people were paying for an incident. You know. It's just terrible.
Yeah, I was, uh, one community had the, uh, it was on a blog I follow, news. And they had a list of all the businesses in one community that had damage. And it covered about eight pages and it was just single line. So-and-so's shoe store broke in, so-and-so's apartment store broke in. I mean, there must have been two, three hundred of them. Some of them were completely dead and they burnt the ground and
It has nothing to do with
Nothing.
Nothing to do with the racial part.
You know, the problem I've got is I was in the National Guard and got called up to call the riots in Watts down near the LA area. And it was the same identical issues that we're facing today. Racial issues that they did. They burnt the city down. I mean, there was areas there that if you go back today that used to be a super parking lot, just a piece of concrete out there.
So.
Yeah. They're not helping themselves any. There's gonna be a better way to alleviate the issue.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a better way. I mean, they're the same people that represent them, you know, they're in Congress and they don't want to fight any wars. But they don't know.
It's just, and there's so much involved in it. It's just hard to track everything. Understand why this one dirt got big and you just have to be careful what you do. There's one we're doing this little bit over here and this one over here. We all come together and then it all just sad. Well, cheerful, more cheerful note. We got all the teachers moved in here from Carberry. Three teachers from Carberry moved in over here. Now, it's not all set up right, but we got all their stuff from Carberry and we got the teachers stuff from Middle School that are gonna be the four teachers here. The two kindergarten and two first grade. We had to do about that. We had thirty-two of, uh, thirty-two, thirty-seven freshman football players come over to Carberry and help us
Help us out.
Move, uh, uh, them over here and bus shot. Called them, said, hey, we got these thirty-seven kids we can transport from here to here.
Oh, no.
Can y'all help me out here? So they got a bus and moved them over here and then moved them back over there. It was pretty neat. Thank you guys for that. That was exciting, you know. Everybody pitching in.
How many classrooms do you need with that chamber?
Well, let's see, we are classified, let's see. And we have seven, a seven are regular. And then we've got, uh, junior high. And then we have, so we have about ten because we have three hundred programs.
How many kids are in those programs?
Well, this year we'll be popping about a hundred and four, somewhere around.
Is the class only thirty kids, twenty kids, five kids?
Well, it's like
There was classes that had just a handful.
Yeah. And it's like that because you got some kids. It depends on what they need. You know, so like you may have five juniors that may need this class. So you have to open that class so those five juniors get that. Then you may have twenty-four that need this class, so it's just a shift around. You know, because of what they have is they have holes in their transcript. Like they'll have, it'll be a junior part, it'll be a junior kid. And they may have English, the second semester trimester they need. And they finish the first one. But they're a junior. And then they may have a 10th grade first US history or something, you know, they just got it doesn't go into You cut sequence. Because they got so many missing classes. And so you just have to figure out what class is off or that trimester to fill all these kids' needs. So that's the reason.
Well, I'm asking, you know, I sit on the charts. We bought that facility up there. I would like to explore the idea of moving by came in over there. There's, there's a need for the classroom system.
Well, yeah, this will be very long of injury eventually.
Yeah. It'll evolve and just take it down the road. Let it work.
Right, right.
Average class size is fifteen or eighteen or twelve or whatever.
That's still live streaming.
Oh. It'll get
Just to give you a heads up.
Oh, well, alright then. I guess we better not talk about everything in this side. I forgot about that. Thanks for telling us.
I'm the person.
I remember that was the last time that we were in here. Where we were over.
Do you hear that?
Yeah, I heard it. That's probably
I just Same, you know, as butterfly or something. And we got really heavy now. It's like that's hopefully they have received. They have to they have received.
Just get every single man over to you. Is that what it is? That it's just like a training or something like that? Got to get a license or a certificate or something?
When I was talking to my, uh, friends, uh, the other stuff that I like to see is this our educational system. Forces certain areas to all get the kids that on the set that school system. So they can go to your, like, your facility and you need that aside. Should be taking teaching. These things will fly off to the scale. Boy, that is what kind of religion you have. That's true. That's it. The out of town seats. Here's just designed. Those, which all of them, maybe I can fix it. So they gotta have for certain levels of, of education. There is a lot of kids right through the classroom. They're all youngish now. All of the the questions you ask. The way they come graduate they have to prepare. What they have. Always for their something like that. I have here a lot of you should consider. I mean, I don't feel like but looks like we like that's the thing. Six. I just gave kids five. Maybe it's time. Turn that here and show the floor. Look to the way up. And I raise all sorts. This is what they're making. They find five and four. Plus, it's paid. You know, you can't not very all these systems. They're all five. Outside all this, all the ones. For the operations.
Okay. So just open up a different tab. Is that over right now? Okay, remote desktop.
That's mobile.com.
Okay. Come there.
Yeah, my PC.
Uh, like a screen that's says give support.
Yeah, get support and just like the get support.
I don't see that. It's not, I'm, this was like a donation of get started. It says your desktop anywhere, get started. Or remote support.
Remote support.
Okay. Alright, so get support and down, download error.
Yeah.
Okay. Add to Chrome.
Yep.
Okay, communicate, add extension.
Yeah.
Install. Accept install. Open demo, yes. Okay. There. To let someone access your computer, generate one-time access code and share it with them.
Yeah. So there should be a generate code button where the demo button.
Generate code. Okay, yeah, zero two five five four four seven eight eight seven seven nine. Share. Whoops. Okay, can I go back into the executive session?
Yeah, me too.
Okay, thank you.
You may have to restart the link what's this one to the other camera.
Is that just going back into?
I didn't know why, yeah.
Okay.
Just wanted to schedule a new statement and start.
Alright, uh, well
Because I get to actually let you know.
Okay. Alright. Thank you, Ken.
You're still working on it? Do we need to recess?
If he's not let's see, I mean, you said there was somebody in here in blue?
Maybe.
Yeah.
How do you feel about it?
And you've got the screen up.
It's really hard.
Yeah.
Would have been fun to see.
Barbara Moore. Do you need a few minutes?
Yeah, I mean, he's still working on it.
Yeah, let's take him.
Yeah, we're gonna take a bit of a recess.
Tech issues?
Hey, where's Barbara Moore at that?
Uh, Carberry.
And Oh, so funny.
Retired, but it's not like she was already retired.
I think fifteen.
I need to know.
So he was like sixty, seventy years old. He and his wife
Right, technical issues. We're taking a brief recess.
From like your high risk
Or at least we're not recessing.
I we have.
Yeah.
Told them they have to graduate high school and you have
That'd be great.
Or, or some intercalate detective.
Yeah, and then Barbara Morris go as a Carberry family, if you're right.
Or three.
I think three kids.
Three kids and it was like one of the but he and his wife adopted these three.
You give the word, then everyone throws the ball at it. I love NBC.
Brother, sister, whatever. Cool story.
Hey, Mr. Alexander.
Hard because he was like
Not much. Hey, I'm looking at the list that's put up for contracts. And for some reason, Barbara Morris is in blue. Know anything about, why would she be in blue? She's the only one that's marked that way.
Let's keep her.
Have to move into a
Okay.
Let's try it.
Did you say what's new?
I thought everybody said
I couldn't remember the widget again.
Yeah.
Hmm.
No problem.
I'm still tired from Sunday. Oh my.
What'd you do Sunday?
I shoveled two yards.
No problem. Alright, I've got to get back into our meetings.
My month tried.
Yeah, sort of.
To fill my
And the other one
So my neighbor next door, I have a pot out by my pump. He'll reach over and grab my tomatoes.
Are you serious?
So this year I planted the ghost peppers. So help yourself. Help yourself. On the other side, you got the the serrano and half a marrow peppers. I moved the tomatoes to the backyard. I moved the tomatoes to the backyard.
Yeah, oh, that's awesome. That would, that would be fun. I would, I would pay money to see that.
You, you'd go to the hospital.
Oh, they're.
If you ate one, eat, eat one of those.
They're insane. They're absolutely crazy. There was a guy, I watched this silly video, this guy was. He, um, he ate two or three of them. Just as fast as he could and then he washed it down with Fireball. And he's just perfumed.
Had a happy ending.
Vomiting.
Old neighbor, he's gonna be in for it because he, my neighbor that steals my tomatoes over the fence. So, uh, well, that's all right. So I planted the ghost pepper this year. So help yourself. I'm sick, I'm like, I had a big tomato there this morning. And I look over and I see the blinds slowly turning. I'm like.
Okay, so what do we do?
That's awesome.
Yes.
This year you got the ghost pepper.
Preventative measures.
That's right.
Those are.
Unless they're growing on that side of the fence, inject some ghost pepper right in.
Okay.
Ooh, that's a good idea too. Inject something else. No, the ghost pepper, those are hot.
All right, no, that's okay. Thank you. Okay. So we are going to go with this route because they said, he said he had disconnected. As soon as I left. So we are ready to go back.
Okay, all right. Are we live or that way?
Okay.
What's that?
That's the, we're gonna go with this.
Yes, that's where we're at.
Are we live again?
Yes.
We are?
We are.
All right.
He says, yeah, should be live.
Should be live.
I can read that.
Okay. Well, in that case, we are, um, out of executive session and, uh, back in order. At the first action item we have this evening is to set the date and time for the team negotiations.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the GCA has asked us to, to sit down at the table. I put a tentative date of Thursday, June fourth as our first date, if that will work with this board. Um, and typically there's three different, um, ways we can do this. I mean, it can, you can assign me to do it, which I don't approve of really by myself. Um, one or two board members on that, um, committee. And as a negotiating team and or you can have legal counsel sit down at the table. Those are the three ways that I've seen it done. So my recommendation would be that if there's two board members who would like to attend and, and take and represent the, the district, that would be great. I, I myself would be there. Cheryl would be available for financials and, uh, you would run it.
And that would be June, um.
Initial meeting, June, uh, they would like to meet June fourth at three, if that works.
Thursday, 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 four.
And four. Those are public hearings, public meetings will be open to the public, so.
Okay. I, I think the way that we've historically done it. And, and Jody and Ronnie, you guys would probably know best, but we've typically had two board members be a part of that. Um, negotiation process, um. I don't think I'm available that date and time, but, um, are there a couple of board members that would be? What, what time does it begin again? Four, four o'clock on Thursday, June the fourth?
Thought it was three o'clock.
Well, I, we can change it to four.
Oh.
Fourth is when they wanted to first meet, if at all possible. I said it pending board approval.
If it was at four, I could, if nobody else is available, I can make it at four.
Four would be tight, but I could make it at four.
Okay.
Should we have a backup just in case? One of them. When you guys are able.
Maybe put me as a backup, but I've got. Insane amounts of work right now.
Yeah, that's, I'm in the same boat. Okay.
So four o'clock on June fourth.
Okay. And so we, uh, we actually need to have.
Make a motion.
Motion and action that. So I would ask for a motion to have Mr. Kimball and Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to have, uh, Mr. Mike Kimball and Mr. Ross Walker. Attend our negotiation meetings as trustees of the Emma School District.
Perfect.
With. Who's gonna be the backup?
Mr. Garner.
Mike. Mr. Mike Garner is the backup.
And, and I can be a backup too, in case. Something happens. Okay.
Something horrifically awful and.
All right, do we have a second?
All second.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next action item, the waiver approval.
Uh, we just wanted to clear things up. We need a waiver for our impacted daily average attendance request form. Um, so we need in board notes that you did approve the, um, the changes in our quarantine or, or order of any city, county or state. Health agencies are a reason for impacted, um, hours, instructional hours, so. Just need to. It says you approved the, the, in the dates that we've already had, so. That we will apply for the waiver.
And there's no, um, given the extenuating circumstances, the, the state, I mean, there's no issue as far as kids getting credit for attendance and stuff, correct?
The state has said that because of this, there will be as much flexibility as possible. I mean, I, I mean, there's no guarantees. The nine ninety, I believe, with the new flexed hours, drop it to eight sixty. So there's about thirty hours difference and so that's not much of a difference and so we're, we're gonna be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, there's other schools that are in the eight, you know, seven hundreds to eight hundreds, low eight hundreds, so.
Got it. All right, well, in that case, would anybody care to make a motion to approve the, uh, what is the, um, average daily attendance waiver?
Yeah.
Is that what it's called?
Due to, um, you know, basically the health, you know, you should say due to COVID nineteen. And distance learning.
Mr. Chair. Due to the, uh, or I, I motioned to, uh, well, now we took it off the screen. I'm not sure what I'm.
Oh, you want me to put it back?
I motioned.
Clearly stopped.
I motioned.
Should have written out of, um, my recommendation. I should have done that. I apologize.
Other than that, it's an attendance request form. I'm not sure, yeah. Mo- motion to, uh, approve the, uh, impacted out, average daily attendance request form so that we can deal with the. Uh, complications caused by the COVID pandemic.